Welcome, everybody. I am calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is 6:10 PM. We are in the Nashville North Boardroom and it is Monday, June 23rd, 2025. Ms. Lamphier, can you do the roll calls?
Yes, of course. Ms. Darling is not here. I am here. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Prin?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. Daniels-Williams is not here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And then we have student rep Shaq. Our student rep Shaq is here. And we also have Dr. Andre. Mr. Poska. And Tom?
Yeah.
That's it tonight.
Okay, when you are done with the opening statement, can Ms. Gilio lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I said once Ms. Lamphier was done.
Sorry.
I thought we had been spending too much time at Board of Aldermen meetings because they stand for the prayer. And I was like, no, wrong. We're not that fancy.
Okay, here I go. As elected officials, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we go into our recognition presentations, I do want to take a moment of silence for one of our beloved North students who passed away over the weekend, Ian Blake. Let's all just take a moment and center ourselves and think about the people that we love. Thank you for that, guys. Okay, this brings us up to our recognition presentation. We'll get on a different note. Dr. Andre, I will hand the floor over to you.
Is Mercedes here? I'm going to ask you to come down and embarrass you a little bit. So on the behalf of the NHSBA, the Nashville New Hampshire School Boards Association is pleased to recognize you for your outstanding achievement and leadership during your high school career. The 2025 NHSBA Scholarship Award is presented to Mercedes Johnson on May 2025, and it's signed by their president and their executive director. And I believe you are the second person in a row. Somebody else probably in your family received this as well. But I'm really pleased on behalf of the association in the district to give you this award and the scholarship that goes along with it. Congratulations, and again, thank you for your leadership.
I don't have much to say, but in an attempt to be better than my brother, I am going to say thank you to the Nashville, the New Hampshire School Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Johnson, you know her, right?
Yes, I believe so. Yes, the second Johnson in a row to get the scholarship. And there's no more in line, so.
Oh, good. That is an excellent honor. Congratulations to you and your family. So bringing us up to the consent agenda, I am looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. This brings us up to our first public question comment period. I don't think anyone signed up. Okay, so moving right along, I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre for the superintendent's comments.
Thank you. So as we close out the school year, I wanted to take a moment to reflect on some of the highs and lows we experienced together. One of our proudest achievements was the successful opening of McCathay Middle School, a major milestone years in the making. We also celebrated numerous student and educator accomplishments from regional and national awards to local recognition that highlight the incredible talent, dedication, perseverance across the district. So some of those awards were Nashville South was awarded the Female Diversity Award for expanding young women's participation in AP Computer Science. NSD competed in 46 out of 50 events at the New Hampshire DECA State Competition and finished first, second, and third in 34 of those events. Nashville South was named the state winner in the 2424 Samsung SAW for Tomorrow competition. Head nurse Gina Lopez was named the New Hampshire School Nurse of the Year by the New Hampshire School Nurses Association. And CTE video production students released the first Gateway to Success episode spotlight in the district's career and technical education programs. Of course, not everything came without its challenges. Transportation, Stellows were significant hurdles this year. And while we made progress, we know there's still work to be done to meet the expectations of our families and staff. Yet through it all, one thing remained constant, the strength of our community, which, again, I think was very telling over the weekend. Our students continue to inspire us. And the adults in our system, teachers, staff, and leaders show up every day with the commitment to support one another and do what's best for students. Thank you for an extraordinary year, and I look forward to our continued work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. I will start up the horseshoe with the board response to the superintendent's comments. I'll start over here with Ms. Gilio tonight because Ms. Raymond keeps getting picked on.
As always, thank you. It's about all the wonderful things that you said and the fact that we've managed with the challenges that we had. So that's always a good thing. So this part of the meeting always makes me optimistic. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
No, thank you. It's great to see the new field at Stellows. It looks great. The kids seem to be loving it. It was great to walk across it at the graduation ceremonies. And also, the other great thing is that girls' hockey will be starting, which will be amazing to see.
Mr. Claffey?
No comment.
Ms. Prin?
Yeah, just thank you for the updates. It's really nice to hear about the good news and the things that are going on in Nashville. And I hope people can enjoy their summer now.
Ms. Raymond?
Thank you, and I really appreciate you highlighting the things that we're doing well. I also found out that this week, moneyinc.com did a ranking of, they do rankings of the schools in every state. And in New Hampshire, of all the public and private schools together, the Nashville High School is ranked 14th and 15th, which is pretty great since we're the 10th lowest for pure pupil spending. So it's a really great bang for their buck. And some of the things that the article highlighted were the STEM classes that we are able to offer here, the fact that we can meet all of our students where they're at when they come to us, and have a high graduation rate, and the fact that we have the most AP classes and the largest CTE program. So it was a, it's a pretty cool thing, and I just feel like we should talk about this stuff more often.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with you. Ms. Lamphier?
I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Andre and Mr. Poska and the other administrators and teachers and staff for another great year in the books. I hope you guys enjoy your summer, although I know you'll be here, but.
And now our Student Board Number comments.
I'd just like to express my deepest condolences to the family and loved ones of Ian Blake. I wasn't very close to him, but we did do some sports together, and he was always the brightest one there. He was always the most positive. He had the largest growth mindset, and he always pushed us to be better. And he had this no man left behind mentality. I remember back during indoor track, we were running in the halls. And once we were done running, he would always go back and just go back to run back with the people who were still running, and he'd just go with them. Very devastating. I hope they can find solace in these tragic times.
Yeah, everyone takes some time to do what you need to do. Everybody grieves differently, but it certainly is going to impact our community. Okay. Way to start the summer. This brings us up to our Committee on Finance and Operations, so I will hand the floor over to Ms. Lamphier.
All right, so the first motion is to approve the upgrade to the CTE Engineering Lab, including contracts with KI and Telephone Network and Technologies in an amount not to exceed $95,356.51. That money will come from account CTE Tuition 91.2258.041300.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. And yeah.
Any comments or questions?
Which building is this in?
North.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey. I believe yes, I believe it was north.
Yeah?
It's one or the other.
Pretty sure we asked that. Pretty sure it's that.
Yeah, I think north has the engineering lab. Okay, so all those in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Okay. And now a motion to approve the purchase of 23 desktop computers for the 2526 school year from IT Insiders for an amount not to exceed $15,916. This will come from account 91.1.992225.71221.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Claffey.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of purchasing the 23 desktop computers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
The next motion is to approve the purchase of 90 laptop computers from IT Insiders using 2425 funds at a cost not to exceed $65,610. This is from account 91.1.992225.71221.
Second.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the purchase of 90 laptop computers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Next is a motion to approve the purchase of 75 ClearTouch panels for the 2526 school year from ProAV at a total cost not to exceed $250,265. This will come from account 91.1.992225.71221 and Title IV funding.
Second.
And I just wanted to let everyone know that this was a purchase that we wanted to make for the kids that we weren't going to be able to make if the Alderman hadn't approved a little bit larger budget. So I just want to say thanks to the Alderman.
Excellent. Okay, Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I was going to ask that question, but I don't recall which schools these were for from budget conversation.
So they're mostly targeted to the non-Titel I schools. We're looking at some Title I funds for the Title I schools. And then, again, we were fortunate that two schools got some gaming money to offset those two elementary schools. And I just also, for clarification, we did apply for Title IV funding. It came back to be minimal, almost to like pay for one screen. So this will really only be coming from the operating budget.
Thank you. Do you need me to change the motion?
Well, it says that it's not too. So I think it's just, the motion just needs to be from account 91 and just scratch the Title IV funding.
Okay.
That's a shame.
Do I need to say it again, or is it okay to just?
Well, do we need to get rid of not to exceed?
No, the not to exceed is still fine. It's just the Title IV funding is just not coming in where it needs to be.
Okay. Should I read it again and have Mr.?
That would be great.
Okay. Motion to approve the purchase of 75 ClearTouch panels for the 2526 school year from ProAV at a total cost not to exceed $250,265 from account 91.1.992225.71221. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor of approving the purchase of 75 ClearTouch panels, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Madam President, can I just ask if?
Mr. Claffey? Yeah.
If Ms. Lamphier, if you need a break from, this is a log list, and I'm allowed to fill in just reading and?
Oh, sure, that'd be great.
No, I don't want to, but it looks as if, looks as if you could use a little pinch hitter whenever you're ready. And I'm not dying to because I?
You can take over right now. Do you have the motions in front of you? Do you have the motions in front of you?
Yes, of course.
Okay, good, go for it. I'll turn my thing off.
Let me know. We can put you back in. All right, be good if, all right, now I, bloody thing, I'll cover it up here. All right, so recommendation to approve the purchase of 1,748 Chromebooks for the 202526 school year through IT Insiders in an amount not to exceed $419,957.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Prin?
Yes, I'm just curious, is this to replace old ones? Or I'm just curious?
So the, part of the tech plan that we're developing, so this is replacing for sixth grade and ninth grade. So an incoming sixth grader will get a new laptop Chromebook for the next three years, and then it'll be replenished again in ninth grade, and they would have a new one for the four years. So this will be an ongoing purchase every year, and that's how we'll replenish the one-to-one at the secondary level.
Okay.
Ms. Raymond?
I just noticed that on the agenda and on the memos, the last digit of the account number does not match. On the agenda, it's in 71221, and on the memos, it's 71228.
The proper one is 71221. 71221 is computer equipment, and 71228 is computer software, I believe. So we fixed it at our meeting.
This is what happens when I don't watch.
I'm really glad to hear that you guys spoke about this in FNO because I thought you were just some sort of numbers genius. And I was like, I had no idea.
No.
Okay, that's great.
I don't even, I can hardly count to 10, so.
Well, Marked me impressed. Okay, see, no other, Mr. Johnson?
What happens to the Chromebooks that are no longer being used?
Got a Chromebook heaven.
Yeah, so some of them are trashed if they're end of life. Some students might take for a minimal charge. Some get donated to the United Way. So we try to repurpose all of them, so they don't go to waste.
Great, thanks.
Just a follow-up on that. What happens at the end of your senior year? Do you have to give in the Chromebook, or are kids allowed to keep them?
Well, it's, most of them are pretty dead by that point. So, but yeah, I think some students have been allowed to keep them, but I'll verify on that.
But typically, the plan is for them to turn them in so Mr. Rodriguez's department can see if they can be refurbished or whatever.
Yeah. I had a lot of fun calling Julian and being like, you can't graduate. And she was like, oh, my God. And I was like, you still have your Chromebook at home. Because the school called. But yeah, they want them all back.
They want them all back, okay.
It was fun. It was fun, fun times. Okay, no other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the purchase of 1,748 Chromebooks, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
I have a motion, a recommendation of purchase, Follett's Destiny Resource Manager subscription for a year. For a, I have to, for a year at a cost of $23,989.95 plus the $14,000 implementation fee for a total cost not to exceed $37,989.95.
Second.
Ms. Gilio?
I just wanted to say that I've worked with the Destiny program both before I was here on the Board of Education and now that I volunteered the last three years in the library at Broad Street, and it's wonderful. It's really very user-friendly and helpful, and I love it. And so I'm glad we're going to use it again. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Lamphier?
I just wanted to say that Dr. Rodriguez, when we asked him about it, and he said it's such a huge improvement over what we're using now. So he definitely agrees with you. Okay.
Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving the purchase of Follett's Destiny Resource Manager, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Recommendation to approve the purchase of a field lining robot from Turf Tank for $16,000 a year for three years. Account 91.1.22.262.0.53628, Contract Services.
Second.
Ms. Raymond?
How often do you have to paint the lines?
It's for the grass, not for the stadium.
There's a lot of fields.
It's not for Stellows, it's for all the other.
There's a lot of fields.
Oh, okay.
Stellows lines are woven in.
Yeah. But we have a lot of other fields that need lines.
Yes.
So is this something that can be picked up and brought to all of the other schools?
I'm just imagining like one of the robot vacuum cleaners.
That's exactly what I have in my brain.
Is that what it is? Did you guys see pictures of it?
No, but the?
The manpower hours that are going to be saved is enormous. And Mr. Smith wasn't here that night, but his second-in-command told us all about it, and he just really sounded like so excited. It's going to save him so much time, and overtime, too.
Yeah, Mr. Garrett was here and spoke really highly of it, of, again, the amount of manpower. It typically takes hours to line the practice football field, like almost a full day. He said within an hour, this robot can actually paint the field. And then just the amount of savings on paint is incredible as well. So for the Plan Ops Department to be very supportive, I think just is a testament on just how useful this machine is going to be.
They're taking over the world, man.
He said it would not put anybody out of work. In fact, he has more than enough work already, so.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's one IT gadget that's not going to put people out of work. But yeah, he was like a little kid at Christmas. As much as Mr. Garrett can get excited about anything.
Okay.
Just Turf Tank, just sounds like an SNL thing.
I want to see this.
From Turf Tank.
I want to see how this thing does a field. I'm so intrigued by how it goes in there and accurately does a whole football field.
Right, we'll have to go, have to take a board meeting, field trip.
Yes, absolutely.
He did say he's asked, he mentioned other towns that have it, and he's seen it in action.
But if you Google Turf Tank on YouTube. They do have very interesting names, the ones that come here.
And the DPW currently has one, so the city's already using one as well.
Fantastic. All right, so seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving the purchase of the field lining robot from Turf Tank, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
I have a recommendation to approve the contract with the Adult Learning Center/Clearway High School for $600,000 with FY26 budgeted funds. in the amount of $300,000 at 91.1.99111053600 in the amount, in the amount of $300,000.
Second.
I have a quick follow-up question for Dr. Andre about this. So this is for 45 slots plus 10 special ed slots at Clearway. What happens if we don't use all of those slots? Do we still, we're still contracted to give that funding even though we don't have students there?
That's correct.
Okay. How often are we filling all of those spots?
So that's why we're reducing the number. So our previous contracts were up to 60 students. For the last three years or so, we've been hovering right around 45. That's been our sweet spot. And then it's a reduction to reflect the reduction of seats.
Okay. I know that we had spoken about not being at that capacity for a bit now, so. Okay, well, that's good to hear. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, oh, Ms. Lamphier, sorry.
I just wanted to let everybody know, because I wrote it down, that this contract is $33,000 less than last year. And I mean, with all the inflation, everything going up in price to save that much money is pretty good. So that was good negotiation by Mr. Gray and Dr. Andre.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's where I was going with that. Ms. Raymond?
I just want to put that bug in Dr. Andre's ear that in the past, pre-COVID, the board was invited at some point during the school year to tour Clearway. And it was really, it was really cool, and they have an amazing program. And so I'm going to ask that for the next one, too.
So we already had a conversation. So the Clearway leadership is new within the last year and a half. So Gail Casey, who used to work for us in the 21st century, is the new COO over at ALC. And a former South administrator, not a South, Assistant Principal is now the new Clearway Director. So I just met with them last week, and we talked exactly that of how we can have a tour over at Clearway or them to have a presentation here next school year.
Yeah, a presentation would be great, too, because I think that the differences between why a student would be here in one of our buildings versus at Clearway versus at Brentwood is not well-understood in the community. So it would be a good educational opportunity for all of us.
Excellent. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving the contract, nope, approving the contract with the Adult Learning Center/Clearway for fiscal year '26, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
A recommendation to approve the contract with the YMCA of Greater Nashville for $185,256 with FY26 budgeted funds. $35,000 from account 91.1.991421.53628 and $45,213 from a Title I grant and $33,043 from a Title IV B grant, and finally, $72,000 from a Title IV A grant.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Ms. Raymond?
Yeah, I'm just so pleased that we were able to bring this back. I know in our contract discussions a year ago, we were worried about being able to afford this. And this program won a national award last year because of the outstanding job that they do. So I would also love to go visit it at some point this summer.
Ms. Bishop?
Mr. Poska?
Yes, I appreciate Ms. Raymond saying that because this year especially, it took a collaborative effort between Joe Manzoli from the Y and his team, along with Sherri Fulton, who oversees Title I, Jindalacha, who oversees Title IVB, and then Dr. Scar Party come on board to make this happen. It was a challenge trying to get things approved through the grants along with what's in the operating budget. So we, too, are pleased that we can offer this program for the summer. And again, it took a lot of effort on everyone's parts to make this happen. So thank you for recognizing their efforts.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving the contract with the YMCA for fiscal year '26, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, enthusiastically approved.
I have a recommendation to approve the physical therapy contracts from ABC Physical Therapy for an amount of $241,000 using FY26 budgeted funds. Account 91.1.0221.6053614.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the physical therapy contracts from ABC Physical Therapy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
May I, Ms. Lamphier, you want to get the save and?
Oh, no, you can go ahead. It's pretty easy.
I'm kidding.
It's pretty easy when everyone agrees.
Yeah, right.
All right. Recommendation to approve the occupational therapy contract from Clark Associates, $939,215 using FY26 budgeted funds, account 91.1.02216053614.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the occupational therapy contract with Clark Associates, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve the multi-year school psychology contract from White Birch for the fiscal year 2026, I guess, 2025-2026, in an amount of $475,875. And then for 2026-2027, $486,000, account 91.1.02216053614.
Second.
Any comments or questions, Ms. Raymond? And then Ms. Gilio?
Thank you. So I'm going to vote for this because we have to do it, and we have to have the school psychologists. But I continue to be really worried about how we will ever get out of this situation, because it looks like the average, as I'm, as I'm doing the math here, it's costing us like $80-ish thousand a year per school psychologist, which is more than a starting school psychologist would make on our teacher's contract, but probably less than they would make if they hung up a shingle and were just a psychologist in private practice. So I'm just worried about us getting, continuing in this pattern where we aren't able to fill positions in-house because of wages. And I know we just approved a contract, and I brought it up during the contract as well. I just, I don't see a way of, of breaking free of this, you know, in the future.
Well, Ms. Gilio, then Mr. Claffey, is that okay?
Oh, yeah. I just, well, there's a shortage of school psychologists everywhere, and we just tonight have, have promoted one from school psychologist to assistant principal at one of our elementary schools. That's to be discussed later in this meeting. But my question is actually, if somehow miraculously into the school year, we start to get an influx of qualified psychologists applying for our jobs, can we hire, for jobs, can we hire them?
Yes.
We don't have to turn them away because we've contracted.
That's correct. The contract allows us to, for us, look in-house before using the agencies.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Andre.
Mr. Claffey? No? Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the multi-year school psychology contract with White Birch, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, finally, we have a recommendation to approve the FY25 May transfer report.
Second.
Any comments or questions about the transfer report? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, FNO team. I will now hand the floor over to Ms. Raymond for Committee on Policy.
Okay. Thank you. So we met on June 15, and we started talking about cell phones, June 15? No, June 17. But tonight, what we have on the agenda is the stuff that we had talked about the month prior in May. So I'm just going to dive in. So the first policy I have for approval tonight is I move that we approve policy IHBH Extended Learning Opportunities.
Second.
Okay. And just briefly, an extended learning opportunity is an educational experience outside of the classroom, like an independent study or an internship, and this policy explains how to get that approved.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy IHBH, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move that we approve policy IHBI Alternative Learning Plan.
Second.
All right. And so alternative learning plans are a little bit different. These are for students who need an alternative option to be able to complete their graduation requirements. And then the next one will be the application process for that. And I can't answer questions, but Mr. Poska can.
Do we have any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy IHBI, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move that we approve policy IHBI-R, which is the Alternative Learning Plan Application.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any comments or questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy IHBI-R, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move that we approve policy IMBA Online Education.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
So this is the policy that covers students who are like taking classes on V-Lax, which we have a lot of students who, for whatever reason, can't fit something in their schedule, so they take a V-Lax class. We have a lot of kids who like to do it over the summer, either to plug gaps or because they have an interest that they couldn't fit in.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy IMBA, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Do you want to, I guess not. Okay. Sorry. I was not expecting that. Okay, so motion passes. Ms. Raymond? You totally threw me there, Mr. Claffey.
So people have opinions on online classes, and that's allowed.
Yeah.
I'm saying this as a parent. I honestly thought about whether or not I should abstain from voting, because my own child is taking, hopefully, a V-Lax class this summer, which we have not gotten the email with the confirmation yet, which is freaking me out.
Same.
But he discovered that he's not going to graduate unless he takes this class. So it's really kind of important that we fix the schedule. So anyways, I move that we approve policy IMBA-R, which is the application process for taking classes online.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Comments or questions?
Actually, just one that just came up while I'm looking over. Is there other options for online classes besides V-Lax, or is that like the end-all, be-all?
There is theoretically. So you can take, like, the community college, we have that dual enrollment program, so one of those could be an online class. And then there are other accredited places that offer online classes, but they have to be approved. We have a, like a memorandum of understanding with, with the V-Lax, so we know that the V-Lax ones meet our internal criteria for credit. If it's something else, it would have to be reviewed and approved by administration to make sure that it meets the same academic rigor as the class that you would take in the classroom.
Okay.
And I think the principal does that. I don't know who does that.
Correct, the principal. And Ms. Raymond was accurate. The vast majority of these requests are for V-Lax courses. At times, there might be some requests for some type of dual enrollment. That's for the most part what we see, but even if you look at the application, it's specific to V-Lax for one section, and then other online options for the second section.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of IMBA, no, IMBC, right?
IMBA-R.
BA-R, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. The next one is I move that we approve IMBC Alternative Credit Options.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Right. So the prior, the prior policies, we made very small changes to. This one, we have pretty much replaced the, pretty much the whole thing. And that is to meet the new requirements of the Learn Everywhere program that are in the, I think it's in the Ed 306s. I'm not sure where it is, but this is now in compliance with, oh, Ed 315, with the Department of Education's requirements for the Learn Everywhere program, right?
That is correct. And I think just from a formatting piece, our older policy that had last been updated in 2015, has most of the other, has most of the information that we're adopting, was just much better organized. So the recommendation was made to adopt the NHSBA policy with what we currently do right now.
Oh, and it's not, I just want to be clear, it's not only Learn Everywhere. This also applies to our National Center for Lifelong Learning. So if we have a student who, for whatever reason, can't finish everything that they need to finish within the school day, and they want to take a class with the National Center for Online, for Lifelong Learning, which used to be the Adult and Continuing Ed, this is the same policy, and then the next one is the application for that process as well. So it happens.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so all those in favor of approving policy IMBC, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. I move that we approve IMBC-R, which is the Process Procedures and Application Form for Taking Alternative Credits.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any comments or questions in regards to the forms of the application? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving policy IMBC-R, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And so we meet on July 15. We have changed our meeting time to 4:30, and so this is unusual for policy. It will be on the website, but our plan for July is to continue our conversation about cell phones, and then whatever else the district has that needs to be discussed before school starts in the end of August.
Okay.
We welcome anyone's participation or thoughts, and we'll see. So far, the governor has not signed the cell phone bill that we all were expecting weeks ago. But if she does, the one that's on her desk takes effect immediately.
Wow.
So it doesn't give us a lot of time to pivot.
We're going to go get one of those jitterbug phones.
Are there payphones still in schools, or no? Or will there ever be payphones in these schools?
No, I don't think there's payphones. I mean, even...
Run out with a quarter.
Even in the 90s, when I was in school in Massachusetts, we didn't have a payphone in the school. Like, you had to go...
Yeah, the payphone.
Yeah, we had to go ask to use the office phone.
Call your mom, collect. I need to be picked from school now.
Yep.
Oh, my mom would not have been cool with that.
That's how we did it. All right, so that'll be a fun conversation to have, July 15, you said?
July 15 at 4:30 PM, which is an unusual time for us, which is why I'm announcing it here.
Yes. Well, being flexible is great.
And Finance and Operations will be at 6 o'clock on the same day, I believe.
Yes, yes. And I want to thank everyone for being, you know, being willing to switch with us. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, when we're legally required to only post the meeting times, what is it, 48, 72 hours in advance?
I think it's 24 hours in advance.
It's June. This is, this is well beyond what we legally have to do. So thank you guys for being so forthright with your meetings and your times.
I think, at least in the case of policy, and we don't typically get guests at policy, but knowing that cell phones is something that everybody has an opinion on, we just want it to be as, get in front of it as much as possible, so that people know we're meeting. If they have an opinion, they can come, and so that we're not, at the end of August, at a, at a full board meeting...
Right.
Having 500 parents come wondering what's going on.
Yeah, the board meeting is not, is not the time to hash out committee, committee conversations.
Right. I mean, and that might still happen. We might still see an influx of public comments, and we welcome that, but we can hear it before.
Yeah. And we can talk about it while it's...
Yeah, at any time, people can email the BOE, people can come to the policy meeting. We want to hear from, from the community.
Yes. Mr. Johnson?
I just want to add, I want to thank our student reps for coming to our policy meeting, because it was very informative to get their viewpoints, being students...
Yeah.
And representing the students, what they feel about this, this law that's coming our way.
Yeah. Yeah, re-watch that meeting if you guys haven't been able to catch it. You did, you did a great job. So we appreciate you. Okay, so Ms. Prin, do you have any updates for CNE?
No.
Okay, love it. This brings us up to Ms. Gilio for Committee on Human Resources.
Hi, I'm looking for a recommendation to suspend the rule to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Second.
All those in favor?
Should I make the motion?
Yeah, can you make the motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Now we need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay. Earlier tonight, we, I, we, we looked at, the HR department has been incredibly busy, and we had pages and pages of new hires to approve tonight under the Personnel Recommendations for June 23. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the Personnel Recommendations of June 23, 2025.
Second.
Just any, any comments or questions?
Oh, I have a comment. So I asked, I asked in the meeting, I just want to say it in the full board meeting. I asked in the meeting, because when the Personnel Recommendations get published, people will see that the starting salaries are less than what we approved in the contract. So I asked about that. And the contracts are before the alderman tonight. I think that's where Dr. Andre went.
He flew off to.
And tomorrow night, and so once the contracts are officially approved by the alderman, the starting salaries will be reflected of the new contract, which starts July 1.
Yep.
So the new hires will get that higher contracted rate, not the lower rate that is reflected in the Personnel Recommendations.
Okay.
I was worried.
Yeah.
We, we worked hard to get a higher, more competitive starting pay.
Right. That was the point, so we can get people in and keep them in. Okay, so any other comments or questions in regards to the Personnel Recommendations? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Personnel Recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and we'll take them individually. We have five recommendations from the administration tonight for approval. First recommendation, and I'll make the motion, is to elect Jillian Cook to the position of Assistant Principal at Penachuck Middle School at an annual salary of $91,200.
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Ms. Cook's nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And she was able to be here tonight, which is nice.
Yeah.
The next is I'm making a motion that we elect Elena Higgins to the position of Assistant Principal at New Searls Elementary School at an annual salary of $84,000.
Second.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the hiring recommendation of Ms. Higgins, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We were also able to meet her tonight.
Yes.
Next, we have I'm making a motion that we elect Jamie Nado to the position of Work-Based Learning Coordinator for the Nashua High School North and South at an annual salary of $85,000.
Second.
Any question? Ms. Lamphier?
Sorry. Yes, I would have asked this earlier, but I was in the audience. I was looking at Ms. Nado's resume, and I saw that she had a lot of experience working with people with diverse needs, disabilities and stuff. And I didn't know where she's going to be working with CTE, if she would also be working with the kids, finding positions for the kids with disabilities at all outside in the community.
At this time, her role is going to be solely working specifically with our CTE students and try to create those opportunities along that pathway.
Okay.
I think in conversations with Ms. Talbott, she identified as this is the most important position that she needed going forward to expand those internship opportunities for our students in the CTE. So I think we're excited about what that opportunity can bring, and then maybe there's other opportunities down the road, as once she gets her feet wet and sees the other opportunities within the community, because I think, as we talked about in HR, a lot of her face time is going to be networking with businesses and community organizations to provide some possible internships for our students.
Okay, that sounds good. I'm really excited to see what she can do. She has a lot of great experience, so it's exciting.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the recommendation for Ms. Nado's hire, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next, I make a motion that we elect Alyssa Murphy to the position of ELL Coordinator for grades six through 12 at an annual salary of $84,000. for grades 6 through 12 at an annual salary of $89,618.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the hiring of Ms. Murphy, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, I'm making a motion to elect Ashley Benoit to the position of Assistant Principal at Broad Street Elementary School at an annual salary of $84,000.
Second.
Comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation to hire Ms. Benoit, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes what we, what we, was a very robust meeting tonight.
It was a robust meeting. It's fun to watch. Reagan and I were in the audience, just watching, watching the ping pong balls, back and forth, back and forth. We have no unfinished business. We do have some new business. Mr. Poska, you are going to give us some information in regards to the Title IVA curriculum.
Yes, I, I think, you know, as we kind of work through and get new people in positions, and as myself and Dr. Scarapati take over more of the grant pieces, and our conversations with Mr. Gray, just really being a little transparent about how we're utilizing and spending some of our grant monies. So, just wanted to point out that we were able to provide supplemental resources for the foundations program at the elementary levels this year through the use of, through the use of Title IVA funds. So, these are, you know, foundations, there's the phonics programs at the younger grade levels. These supplemental resources allow us to provide decoders for that Tier 2 instruction beyond what our regular foundations programs can provide. So, a tremendous resource, because our staff are doing a tremendous job with our, our DIBELS testing. So, this is another way to support that and provide the students what they need at the lower grade levels to make some gains with their reading influency.
Excellent.
Any questions about that? And I think, one of the things we want, you know, to talk about going forward is, although, you know, I think it's not necessarily need a motion to approve this, because it's, it's one of those grant activities, I think it is good for, for the board, and I think we all think it's good for the board to see how are we utilizing these funds as we get them.
I agree. Ms. Lamphier?
I was wondering about the DIBELS testing, because I don't really have any school experience. And I'm wondering if there's going to be a point at which we will discuss the DIBELS testing and how, you know, how the, what the results mean for our kids.
I think that's a great idea. And I think this has been, I think we have a lot of data over the, over the course of this year with our DIBELS testing. So, I think it's, as we start talking about some of the data stories that we're going to tell, I think DIBELS and at the elementary level will be a great piece, something to bring forward. So, I'll work on that with Dr. Scarapati, and we can identify a meeting to kind of present that data.
Yeah, I was going to ask, would it be appropriate to do that at a curriculum?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was, because there's nothing on the calendar for July for curriculum. So, I would like to add that if we could do it for July. Would that be too soon?
No, let's run it past Ms. Scarapati, though, and see what the, how much data is presentable. I know we started last year's curriculum, CNE Committee off speaking about the DIBELS, and I know that was kind of looped into the new report card.
Yeah.
Because we were going to be connecting with parents more about reading scores and whatnot. So, it would be interesting to, am I right about that?
No, you're absolutely right. We, you know, was, you know, kind of, I don't want to say the elimination, but the elimination of the, of the first trimester report cut, along with increased notification about, you know, kind of the progress that those students made on their reading in the beginning part of the year. And I think, at the end of the day, as the conversation we had, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Poska just want to know how little Matty's doing. How is he progressing along those?
Yeah.
And I think that's what's important. And I think people can understand that, as opposed to first, you know, first trimester of grade three, what are those standards? What does that mean? I think this is more specific to that student.
So, I think it would be great to maybe wrap up, wrap up the school year with, with an outcome of how that shift was. So, I think you're absolutely right in prioritizing it for an agenda item. Okay. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that historically, curriculum hasn't met in the summer, but there's no rule about that, right? Like, it's not like you can't. It's just that prior curriculum-
I just don't think there's anything to discuss.
Chairs, like, chose not to. So, it's entirely up to Ms. Prin.
Mr. Claffey was chair. What, what was your-
And Dr. Scarapati.
I certainly never chose to not meet during the summer. I don't remember, I don't recall being asked to meet, and I certainly would have done so.
Well, I should have said this-
As a drop of a hat.
I should have said this, you know, 12 months ago, then. So, there was a time when curriculum met year-round, and I don't know when that changed, but it was sometime around COVID.
So, I think, I mean, remembering probably not 100% accurately, but when COVID hit, we were doing such curriculum revisiting-
Yep.
That when it came time for us to be meeting in the summer, is we were still kind of spinning our wheels to get everybody back in school. And I think this last summer, going into the last school year, was really the first time that we weren't just trying to clean up messes. And we were actually able to, like, get clear and consistent data. And we are able to, like, see non-COVID-challenge-related academic achievement. So, I think the summertime the last couple of years was just like, what are we still doing? So, I can understand why-
Right. So, I'm just saying, like, it's not on the-
It was wrapped into full board meetings.
Didn't go on the, because Ms. Consella does the whole calendar in January, right? So, we get the whole thing.
Right.
But I don't think it was, I don't think it's a rule.
There, it's their meeting.
I would love to be able to meet over the summer. And honestly, when it comes to things like DIBELS data, because of the way, the amount of times that DIBELS is administered, it would be nice to have, like, a meeting each time, just to see the growth through the school year.
A DIBELS data workshop?
Yep.
Yeah. Was it DIBELS from Hop, Hop on Pop? No, Fox and Sox. The DIBELS? I'm going to look it up. I'm going to do some real research tonight.
Hop on Pop is a bandbook, you know, in some places.
It's a bandbook? That's how we got our cat's name. I said, guys, we should pick a literary name for our new cat. And Oliver said, Poppy. And I was like, oh, it's from the Trolls movie. And it was from Hop on Pop, because we used to read it all the time.
Oh, geez.
Her name was Julia in the Humane Society. I kind of stole the cat from Heather.
This is a true story.
She was leaving the Humane Society, and we were walking in, and she was like, there's the most adorable cat in there. And then I texted her later, and I was like, mean duck and cat. They were going to lunch to think about it. That was really mean of me. I'm really sorry.
Our children were small at the time, and there were tears. But at the end of the day, it worked out. We have more than enough animals in my household.
And you don't get woken up at 3:00 in the morning with a little nose nudge. Okay. Mr. Poska, non-affiliated contract, please.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's no vote on that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, when I was looking at this, the, the two amounts, $84,000 requested through Title IVA funds for '23, '24? Has that already been requested?
Yes, we were just worked with the Title IV Coordinator for the state, and we got both of these activities approved.
So, they've just been approved now, even though they were '23, '24?
Yes, this is the title, the Title IV grant is good through June 30th of 2025.
Oh, wow. It's so weird how they do it.
So, and that's why I think those, the federal grants, I think, I think we need to find our cadence for how you only want to report out on, because we do have some extended period of times to spend those monies, and how we allocate what those are on.
Okay. The one, the amount for the Title IVA '24, '25 funds? When is that, when does that end?
That would end in Ju-, September of 2026.
Okay. All right, that's cool. Thank you.
Hopefully, I'm not tested on that later.
Yeah, that, that makes, that's very unclear, but still, thank you.
Okay, so this brings us up to the non-affiliated contract. Does anybody have any comments or questions in regards to the presented non-affiliated contract?
We need to do it in non-public if we have specific questions.
Probably, because they're personnel-related.
Oh, can I ask, I-
Ms. Prin?
I still have a question about the curriculum stuff.
Oh, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So, I'm just, this is just curious, it's like a two-part. And on the elementary level, it's not one-to-one on devices, is it? So, like, each classroom doesn't have their own set of Chromebooks?
Classes do have Chrome, Chromebook sets at their availability, I think is what Dr. Andre was alluding to earlier. One of the things that we're doing now with the, with our development of a tech plan, is trying to identify what should all, what should a model classroom look like at the grade level, at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and the high school level, as we proceed to get, you know, when we talked about the panels, for example, we talked about how we're earmarking some of the, you know, the new panels we're purchasing now through operating to get for the non-Titel schools. So, we have some type of equity between the Title schools that we're able to purchase some through the Title I grant, along with those schools we're able to purchase through the, the gaming pieces, and then all the other schools. So, trying to get that to be equitable. Same thing with the, you know, I think each school does have pretty good access to Chromebooks or classroom sets in there, so they're readily available on a pretty regular basis.
Okay, yeah. That's, I was just wondering, because I saw for the, for the second part, was that the Typing Club and Digital Citizenship, so that they would be using that during computer classes, but they could also do that in the classroom, too, right, if they wanted?
They could, and this would probably be kind of like, almost like a UA, for lack of a better way to say it. But I think the big piece is, is not just the Typing Club that was on it, but adding the Digital Citizenship-
That's awesome, that you have that.
Which is the next step.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. That's all I wanted.
Okay. Did we need to go into non-public for the non-affiliated?
I don't have questions. I generally appreciate that the increases are in line with the other contract increases.
Agreed. Anybody else? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the non-affiliated contract for '25, '26.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Thank you. And we've already established that there are no comments or questions, except that we're happy that everything's in line. Ms. Lamphier?
Was that Ms. Prin or Ms. Gilio?
That was Ms. Prin.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Raymond made it, Ms. Prin seconded it.
Okay.
And nobody has comments or questions. So, all of those in favor of approving the non-affiliated contract, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Do we have any liaison reports? I don't think so.
No.
We do have a JSB C meeting on Thursday, so I, I'm hoping Ms. Daniels-Williams will be there, so she can give us the liaison report from that. I will not be there, albeit UNH orientation.
Aww.
So, if somebody could make sure that they, they do take that report, that would be great. I won't be there to remind you.
I'll, I'll be there, so if, uh-
Okay. So, remind, friendly reminder. Okay. This brings us up to our second public comment. Ms. Homola, you just want to say hi? I've been sitting here all day.
Hi, Alex.
Okay. This brings us up to our final piece, Board Member Comments. I'll start over here with Ms. Raymond, because I started with Ms. Gilio last time.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. One, I have a request for administration that we have some follow-up on Special Education Services. We had a memo from the Department of Education about McCarthy. I have questions about that, and also what the plans are for next year, and if we learned anything this year with some of the changes that were made. So, I'm hoping we can do that before school starts.
Maybe that could be the August CNE meeting.
All right, whatever.
Just book a book in your summer.
Wow, that's, I've got the time.
And the second, I cannot access Facebook from here to pull it up. However, I saw on the Nashville School District Facebook page that the district had gotten approval for some summer meal funding.
Yes.
And that there was a list of places where children can go, a number of our schools where children can go to access free, healthy lunches, in addition to the program already happening at the library and at some other community locations. So, I just wanted to highlight that. If I could access Facebook, I would pull it up and tell you all the schools, but I cannot. So, I encourage everybody to look at the, the School District website or the Facebook page to see where that is, because making sure our kids are fed is really important. So.
Agreed. Ms. Prin?
No comment.
I don't have access in here to look.
Yeah, I don't.
No comment.
Oh, you have it? Hey, Ms. Homola, would you like to come down and read us the list of-
Ms. Homola is able to access Facebook, and I am not. I, this is, this is embarrassing. Okay. So, it says July 8 through August 7, 8:30 AM and 11:30 AM on Mondays and Fridays. Oh, wait, it looks like Monday every day, except-
Through Friday.
Yeah, Monday through Friday. Amherst Street School, Dr. Crisp School, Fairgrounds, Ledge, Mount Pleasant, Nashville High School South, and Brentwood is only Tuesdays and Thursdays. But everywhere else is Monday through Friday.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Homola.
Your clandestine Facebook operation among the, the School District Wi-Fi.
Yeah, I don't know. Clearly, our kids can get around it, if, if other people can, and I just can't.
Yes. I've heard the trick, but I won't share it. Mr. Claffey?
School's out.
School is out.
Why are the lights at Penachuck still on?
You need to contact your alderman.
I have, and I want, if anyone is out there-
Is it Claffey or is it-
Why aren't there just flashing lights instead of green, red?
Well, they're just trying to screw with you now.
There's no school.
No, it's you.
Build a rotary.
Rick was like, that Claffey.
Ruined my life. Ruined my life.
Are you talking about the streetlights or the lights at Penachuck School?
The light. They're supposed to be like-
Like a parking lot light, or like the streetlight?
No, there's a new stoplight outside.
It's been three years of waiting and-
Oh, a traffic light.
Yeah. It's supposed to modify itself when it's not, like, in and out of school time.
Okay, we just added two more minutes, sorry. Madam President, I didn't mean to cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, I think it's funny how dedicated to, like, efficient meetings you are. But you always say the most interesting, interesting things that we want to-
Ignorant things, yes.
Interesting things that we want to talk about.
It's relevant to, to one school, it's just, and you know what's most annoying? I'm on the main drag, right? Manchester Street?
Yeah.
And there are these, like, there's Ferry Road-
Yes.
Which somehow triggers the light. So, why would somebody in Wimpy Little Ferry, if you live on Ferry Road, it's a nice street. But why do you take precedence over a thorough fair like Manchester Street? I just don't get it. Why don't they have to wait? Congratulations to graduates.
Mr. Johnson?
The lights at Exit 4 outside, no.
There's no school there. It's not a school problem, it's a BG.
No, no, you have to go to New Searls One Direction. You have to go to Bicentennial in the other direction.
Yes, you do.
So, so, yeah, there's, there's lights, but, but I'm not going to go into lights. I want to just thank the New Hampshire School Board Association. We've had two scholarships in a row, and those, just wanted to state so people know, those scholarships are not just, it's all board members through the state of New Hampshire. And it doesn't have to be children, it can be grandchildren, and it can be former board members. So, they should always look for the scholarship. They also offer a scholarship for student, former board members.
Yes.
So, that's definitely something that you should keep in mind as you go through your school year. And the pools are open, so if you're hot and you need to cool off, pools are open.
Ms. Gilio?
I'm glad I was here tonight, because I needed a few good laughs. That's it.
Ms. Lamphier?
I am so impressed with us. We got through all this stuff so quickly. It was a really nice meeting.
That's how, that's efficient, productive, and on task. That is my, that's how I do meetings. I have to say that we, we made a little bit of a bet about how long the graduations were going to be, and I have to say, north, I said 8:52 for when it was going to be done, and it was done at 8:51. So, I am dedicated. I am dedicated to this board being used efficiently and our time being spent wisely.
Do we know which one was longer? Was the south?
It was north. South was done by 8:30.
Oh, yeah.
8:37?
8:35.
8:35. I said 8:30. I didn't win that one.
So, south is more efficient.
South is, yes. All right, guys, I have, I have nothing to add. Just hope everybody has a safe and happy summer. Ms. Prin already looks relaxed and well-rested after, what is this, three days of no school?
For me, it's been a week, so.
A week?
Yes, a week for me.
Jeez Louise. Well, enjoy the rest of your summer, and thank you for all of your hard work during the school year. Sheik, I hope you have a good summer. We're going to, we'll see you here, right?
Yeah.
Okay. You don't have to come.